Discuss the repeal of ordinance number 665, section 2147 on fluoridation.
Sure.
Good evening. So tonight, we had before you an ordinance that was passed in the eighties, I believe, to talk about fluoride in our water system. This is something that we have revisited, I believe, a couple times since that ordinance has been passed. And something that we continually get, you know, people will call in or email in about, I shouldn't say continually, but every so often, pretty on a regular basis, we'll have people ask us about fluoride in the water. So we have met with some people, talked to Jason and talked to some other water systems. Before we move forward doing anything, obviously, I wanted to bring that forward at a work session just to discuss, to see if it's something the council is interested in even considering. We have done some research about other systems that have fluoride in their system. And, you know, there's a lot of people who've pulled it because at the time when people were putting fluoride in their system, there was not really good sources of fluoride. So now there's a lot of other sources for fluoride, so because it is, people say it's harmful to your health and different things, so they, you know, people are pulling it from their water system. I don't think there is probably strong evidence that it's, you know, detrimental to people's health or it wouldn't have been in there for so long. But, you know, we spend about $30,000 a year using fluor- putting fluoride in our system. And then there's also some other chemicals that you have to add because fluoride is an acid. There is some effects to employees continuing to handle that. I mean, obviously, they have to protect themselves when they're handling fluoride or putting it in our system. But again, it's something that I wanted us to discuss. We have, you know, Councilman Burrell and I talked, and we have discussed this before and had Dr. Barry Booth come in and speak as well. I think that's probably been maybe five, six years ago, at least when that was happening. So again, this is just for us to revisit that. If there's any, you know, any indication from the council that something that you want to discuss or move forward with, we can get you, gather any more information that you'd like to have and then, you know, be able to consider that.
It's on the work sess- I mean, it's on the agenda tonight, just as an ordinance to be introduced.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking it was-
I thought we pulled it and just put it on the work session.
I did, I missed that.
I didn't, I didn't even realize that it was still on the agenda. Yes, no.
Yeah, still on the agenda. So, but it would just be to be introduced so we can-
Yeah.
I think we want to have some conversation.
Yeah, obviously. Yeah. And that's why I wanted it on the work session, not on the agenda, was just so we could discuss it.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And Jason, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, nope. He's good. He's good.
Yeah. Wonder what you think about it? You're my main water man. I gotta hear what your opinion is. Put you on the spot a little bit.
Well, it's all right. I have a personal opinion and a professional opinion.
Might as well share both.
Well, share both.
My personal opinion is if I'm drinking water, I don't want fluoride in it. My professional opinion is we've backed fluoride ever since I started in this business, back in the late eighties. I can tell you from history, there's two of the oldest systems in the state that started fluoride. The first two is Florence, Alabama, and Jasper, Alabama. Jasper stopped it in 2016. I was a part of that. Florence still uses it, so it's 50/50. So you can talk both sides, the advantages of it and the disadvantages. The rate that it's fed has changed drastically in the last 20 years. We feed roughly half of what we used to because it has been determined that high doses can lead to Alzheimer's and several other diseases, so it's been cut back. But I don't care either way. You tell me what y'all want to do, and that's what we'll do. You want to continue using it. It is a safety issue for our guys, but they're trained and they've not had any issues with it.
I'm gonna lean towards this side of the dice. I feel like these two gentlemen have a little bit more medical background than the rest of us in that industry. So I'd love to hear what y'all have to think about this, if y'all have even investigated it before.
I want to give you just a little more, a little more background. So it's probably been, Kevin, you might remember, eight, nine years ago, we had the discussion about whether it should be removed.
Thank you.
We had some citizens that came to us and wanted it to be removed. And as Mayor Sullivan mentioned, we had Dr. Barry Booth, a lot of people know him, dentist, who practices in Spanish Fort. He came to us and I remember one of the things that he said was one of the top 10 recognized by the CDC, one of the top 10 greatest achievements in medicine in the 20th century, putting fluoride in the water. But nonetheless, we kept it in. We kept it in at that time. And then over time, I talked to the mayor, talked to Jason a little bit about this. And Jason pretty much said to us then, what he said to us now, was that, you know, you could look at both sides. And I kind of tended to think, well, if you can get fluoride from another source such as toothpaste, everybody pretty much uses fluoride toothpaste, I would assume, unless you have an allergy to fluoride, you know, you're probably getting enough. But I got a call from Councilman Martin and said, you know, this is a pretty big step, you know, have we really studied it? And I'm gonna let him carry on. But I sent you guys, I did some research, and I sent you guys a document today. And it was dated 2018. It was put out by the ADA. And I asked, I looked for questions such as, do we need fluoride in our public water? Do we still need it? Does it erode the pipes? A lot, a lot of things that, you know, are there, is it acidic? Is it a terrible system? And it's about 130, 150 pages, but if you read the first 25 or so, you'll get the answers to most of those questions. And after reading that, I concluded that we probably, and also I was kind of thinking it was about 100 grand, and I believe the mayor told me it was 30 grand. Keep in mind, Jay, for you, they said that this is, you know, it's been litigated. It's, nobody's ever been, it's never been held up in court of law that it ever did any damage to anybody, ever, never, in the history of the country. There are some European countries that took fluoride out of their water. There was a study in Scotland, and it's in that paper, that showed once they took the fluoride out of their water, their incidence of tooth decay went up over 100% in their population. And then one of the most telling signs was that even today, even with all the other items in your household such as toothpaste that has fluoride in it, it still continues to reduce tooth decay in 25%, by 25% in the general population. And it used to be, before they put fluoride in toothpaste, when they started putting fluoride in water back in the 40s, it reduced tooth decay something like 60%, but it's still 25%. And that was pretty surprising to me. So I started thinking, maybe, maybe we don't need to take it out. And that's probably the side that I would come down. Now, I realize fluorine gas is, it can be dangerous, you know. It's a fuel. I've actually been burned by it, personally been burned by fluorine gas. It can be dangerous. But I think the way we handle it here is you guys are trained, and it's relatively safe to handle it the way we use it. But anyway, I'll yield to Councilman Martin. If you didn't get a chance to look at that, I tried to pull it up on my computer.
I couldn't get it from him.
And I mean, if you just scan through the topics in the index, you'll see a lot of what I was mentioning.
Yeah. No, I, you know, I reached out to a couple of people myself, and I did some due diligence. I just thought, you know, why, why would we do this? I didn't know if I was missing something, or if something came up new, where we saw that fluoride was detrimental to our health as a public. But there is nothing out there, and it's only backed by every medical association that we should have fluoride in our water. 75% of the United States has fluoride in their water, which is huge. So you're talking about 300-some million, 200-some thousand, 200 million has it. So, you know, I just don't know why we would pull ours. And it's more detrimental, more so, to the children than it is to the adults, even though some of these studies, like one that Jack saw, that it does have some type of detriment to adults as well, once you remove it. And also to those that can't afford to buy bottled water. I know that seems kind of crazy, but there's a lot of people that are drinking tap water. And we want to make sure that, that we want to keep our community healthy. And I just don't see, I think someone mentioned a cost-benefits analysis. I just don't see that weighing to remove it. I don't see the benefit at all. And the literature, you know, that we can produce shows that. I just wanted to see some numbers that show me that, that it would be beneficial to us to remove it when we know it's beneficial to us to have it health-wise. I need to see something that proved that it was beneficial to us to remove it, and it would not hurt us health-wise or our children. That's what I wanted to see. And I haven't found that thus far.
Gentlemen, do either of y'all have any opinion?
Yeah, and any commentary on that?
Well, mine's the same old, same old, the fact that, you know, I've lived here all my life and drank the water all my life. I mean, I don't drink bottled water. I drink tap water. It's all I've ever drank. It's the best tasting water in seven states, as far as I can take, is, I mean, I love, I don't, and I've said this in the past when it came up eight or nine years ago, I don't want you messing around with the formula that we have on what I determine is this fine water. That's just my personal opinion. Now, I don't know if taking fluoride in or out would, you know, do anything to the taste of it. But I just, I would just prefer to leave it there unless, I'm like, Councilman Martin, if, unless I could see some significant numbers from a reliable source that says this is a problem, I don't see why we need to fool it. I do see the numbers or the information where it is beneficial to the health of your teeth.
Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, I honestly don't know enough about it to give an educated response. I'd like to read what Councilman Burrell sent. And I'd like the opportunity to, if we're going to introduce, if we are going to have it on the agenda tonight and introduce it.
It sounds to me like that was a miscommunication to begin with. And I don't think that we need to have it on the agenda tonight. So we'll go ahead and pull that. But if y'all want to add it to the agenda at a later date, just take some time, research the article, information Councilman Burrell sent out.
Yeah, I'd want to know, you know, why, was it Florence or Jasper took it out of their water? Is that right? You know, I'd want to know what some of the other municipalities have done, why they chose to make that decision, what information they used to determine that, and just sort of work it that way. But it sounds like there's arguments on both sides, and I just want more information.
All right. So it sounds like for right now, we need to go ahead and plan on pulling item number eight until we've had additional opportunity to research further. And if y'all want to add it at a later date, just get with me, get with the mayor, we'll put it back on the agenda.
Yeah. And what I'd say, hey, Jay, I would say that look up the, read this, read this report that I sent you. I mean, this is from the ADA. I don't know if there's a better source for this information.
Yeah, I'll see you some stuff, Jay, from Memphis.
And it may be that a lot of these are just wife tales, a lot of the dangers. Because I think it does seem to dispute that, you know. You know, going back to lots of studies showing where cities had ceased adding it to their water. And I'm reading 200, I cited one study of a 100% increase in tooth decay. There's another one showing increases of 200%, 91%. And then, but go in and look at the dangers, and they address all of that. Can't sit here and read it and cover everything in this work session, but it's pretty darn thorough.
Okay. Well, everyone in agreement to go ahead and pull it tonight then, and not have any need to consider?
Should have been on the agenda.
All right. Yeah, no, it sounds like it was a miscommunication. We intended to just have it on the work session, so apologize for that. All right. Let's move on to item number two, greens resurfacing report. Tom, I believe you're gonna address us? Sound like we got some good news out there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Well.
Does the fluoride in the water make the grass greener?
Slice.
Or brown?
Brown.
I've gotta go to the dentist tomorrow and have a crown replaced. I want to keep the fluoride in the water.
All right. So this is a picture of one of the greens that we were talking a few months ago about tearing out and replacing? That's a pretty good turnaround job.
Yes. Today is actually my three-month anniversary working with the city of Fairhope, and I want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity.
Well, happy three-month anniversary. So I know we've had the benefit, we finally had some, some hot weather and some sun. Obviously, it's been raining here a little bit the last week or so. But I mean, are we to the point where we're not gonna have to really replace any of the greens? Or what is your thought? 100%?
Yes.
Turnaround? Okay. That's great.
That is great.
So we need to be saying thank you, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, brother.
I don't walk on water, but I come close.
Well, all I know is I drove out there and looked at those greens. I don't know the first thing about golf, but I know you couldn't play anything on it.
No, it was rough shape.
Now, if they looked like that, that's, that's first class.
Three months ago, they were as dead as dead gets, as dead as this lectern here.
Yeah.
I've been in this business in various capacities for 47 years now. And in all my dealings, whether in a textbook, video, or in person, I've never seen anything as bad as I saw at Quill Creek.
Wow.
Huh. Well, do you think y'all got the recipe for success moving forward figured out? I mean, is it?
I do. I think that we still need to look at drainage issues on several of the greens. I spoke with a company out of Stewart, Florida, just today that specializes in that. We're probably looking at $25,000 to $30,000 per green to improve the drainage there. It's, they're called slit drains, are basically French drains for push-up greens. And the company out of Stewart, Florida excels in it. They have a deep background and are highly recommended. Beyond the drainage issues, I think we're in the clear. Yeah, I'd love for you to come see them.
Okay. Well, that's, that's a great report. Do you have anything else you want to just fill us in about, about Quill Creek, or?
So I did ask Tom to mention the, a mower. There's a budget adjustment on the agenda tonight. And there's a bat wing mower that Tom can tell you about that he would like to purchase. So they're not going to be the driving range this year, and had hoped to be able to purchase that to help with his maintenance crew. And I want him to tell you how that's going to benefit the golf course as well.
You talking about the mats for the driving range?
Yeah, they're not going to do that this year.
Not gonna do that.
But I think this mower could really help.
Okay.
Yeah. Currently, I mow 70 acres of rough with two zero-turn mowers that are 42 inches wide.
Need some real mowers.
I've, I've found, with the help of Randy Weaver, a mower that can be pulled behind a tractor, a John Deere tractor that we have that is not used regularly. 45 horsepower tractor, 15-foot wide, pull-behind mower that will run less than $30,000. I'll leave it at that. I'll bring you the exact specs at next council meeting.
What kind of mower? Is it real, or is it complete?
It's not a real mower. We have too many roots, Mr. Burrell, on the course for me to run a real mower. I'd love to have a pull-behind real mower to really-
Kind of like those pull-behind finish mowers.
It's a pull-behind finish mower, somewhat like a bush hog, but for finish mowing at one to five inches height.
Okay.
You ask a loaded question there, Mr.-
I guess I did.
Is there anything you want to talk about at the golf course?
Well, I was expecting a longer work session, so I figured I'd give you the floor.
What about the fairways and the aquins around the greens? Are they coming back as well? They were, they were in better shape these greens, but, you know, we had such drought.
I'll put them up against Lakewood's.
Okay.
I'll put my fairways up against anybody who's in the state of Alabama.
Wow. I got a side bet on that.
Did you get that, guy? I'm gonna quote that, man.
I'm side betting.
Tom, I want you to tell them about your weed challenge that you did when you were at Mississippi State.
We should say weed.
We need to know about it.
Weed, Mississippi State.
You say weed.
His weeds on the golf course.
Keep that to yourself.
The weed challenge. And what he's, tell them.
Yeah, I did go to college for it, yeah. No, I ran the golf course at Mississippi State for five years. And each year, we had, the largest tournament of the year was for weed scientists from all around the United States. And the winning prize was a brand-new cart golf bag, a set of, full set of clubs, and all the other paraphernalia that went with it, for the person that found the most weeds on my golf course. And these are weed scientists. These are the top people in the world looking for weeds on my course. In 1993, the man that won the cart golf bag and the set of golf clubs found 11 weeds in 213 acres.
Wow. That's pretty good.
So it's gonna take-
Weeds are a variety of weeds.
11 total weeds in 213 acres. It's gonna take me about a decade to clean up Quill Creek. It's a goat ranch. We all know that.
Don't print that.
I've sprayed 1,200 gallons of herbicide already. Mayor Sullivan will tell you that I'm short on staff by three people. It's, I'm running the golf course with four people total, including myself.
Okay.
So could use a little help there. You opened up a can of worms, Mr. Carter.
That budget's coming up, Tom.
Yeah, good timing.
Yeah.
We have some issues, but we're meeting them all. Everyone knew that Mayor Sullivan was coming out last week, and they pitched in immensely. The, my mechanic, for example, mowed greens, fixed a mower, and then was on a zero turn, all in the same day, by 8:30 when Mayor Sullivan showed up. I mean, the crew is really pulled together. I'm very, very proud of the staff that I have. I did lose one employee to heat stroke about a month ago. He spent four days in the ICU, and then another week in the hospital. He came by the golf course today to say thank you to everyone. He's on short-term disability and likely will never return to work. I have another employee who's, who had a child born with brain deformity, her brain did not separate into hemispheres. She's had surgery twice and is looking at surgery again in August. I have another employee whose oldest daughter is suffering from seizures and had to be flown by helicopter to Pensacola two weeks ago, so I lost him for two weeks. It's been a real, real challenge, not to mention the administrative difficulties that we have faced, and I won't get into that. But I'm proud to say that we have saved all 21 greens. It may take up to one pallet of sod to fill in certain little small areas on five of the greens.
Well, buy your pallet of sod. That's a good trade.
Tom, are you thinking we still need that? Are we still gonna, do you have a different idea as far as our hitting area with the mats? Or are we still, or is that still a good deal?
I personally think we should go with the mats. We're seeing, I won't speak for the director of golf, but he shared with Mayor Sullivan and I that he felt I was doing such a good job at the range-
That's what I had.
That we didn't need the mats.
You know, I was just, just asking. That's where I was headed with it.
The problem there is we're seeing a lot less play right now. And once the play increases, the range is gonna be beat up. Also, I only have one sand bin, and I'm using high-dollar, top-grade, top-dressing sand to fill in the divots on the range.
It'll be costly. I got you.
So it's just not cost-effective for me to continue to try and manicure the range. It, I have my own ideas about mats and whether we should level the little slope that we have in back there and all, but I'll save that for another meeting.
Now, so going back to that real quick, we've got a request, I guess, coming in the, in the budget to shuffle some things around, buy a mower, put the mats off. Would that be something that's picked up in this next budget cycle, or would it be pushed off even further than that? Okay. Okay.
I think the mower next presses it's on the range right now.
Right. Got it.
Mower is pressing, and then the one I found, I can have next week.
Good. Okay.
Okay. Would it be on the agenda next meeting, probably? Okay.
Okay.
On the 25th, we can get it on the agenda.
Randy and I did legwork today on it, and it's ready for your approval.
All right. We'll make sure we get it on next, next meeting, for sure. Thank you for that great update. I appreciate you saving those greens.
I do want to say thank you to my staff once again. They've really pitched in and helped out for those that are not as fortunate as others.
Yeah. We're definitely gonna be praying for them as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Tom.
All right. Counsel, that, those were the only two items up for discussion. So this time, we've got committee updates. Councilman Burrell?
Board authority meets this week. I don't have any updates.
Councilman Martin?
Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board wants to present a resiliency index to us. I think it's gonna be on our next work session. Someone from the state will come.
They requested August 8.
August 8, okay. Official time will be August 8. So they'll be coming to present that to us on August 8 as far as the resiliency index. I think we've set precedent. We've done this in the past.
Bless you.
Bless you. We've done it in the past, but from our experts, they're saying that it's time to do it again. And they will give us more information. I'll let them do that when they come on the 8.
Okay. Perfect. Councilman Robinson?
Nope.
Councilman Bean?
All right. And I don't have anything this time, so we can go ahead and go through department head updates. And if you've got an update, we can also cover your agenda items. So Richard, you want to kick us off?
Oh.
You all right?
Thank you.
I do want to give you kind of one report that's not on the agenda. As, as you may recall, if your memory's holding up, y'all approved a new chiller for the library. And that may have been nearly nine months ago. Well, it has now been installed. It is running and cooling the library. And they still are working on some of the final controls aspects of that. But, you know, we've been, been nursing the wounded chiller all the way through that hot spell in June. And it is a relief now to know that we have that equipment there, and the library will consistently remain cooled and heated as we go forward. So that was kind of a big checklist item that, that was important. And again, it's just part of that long lead time on anything of that nature. I will apologize in advance. I have quite a few items-
No, that's good.
-that I discuss on the agenda.
Fire.
I will just state that George, who is present, and I have been very involved with Eric and John Thomas on the railway ordinance.
Right away.
So, you know, I will just lend my support there. And I think that we've addressed a lot of shortcomings and, and also cleared up some areas that need to be cleared up. I do appreciate y'all's willingness to have the conversation and look at, at the trash ordinance, to continue to make garbage and trash ordinance. I did, the mayor asked to kind of, to do a little bit of research, and I just want to give you a little bit of information. Right now, we have billed customers in the city, combined residential and commercial, of 11,287. That breaks out to be 10,537 are residential, 750 are commercial accounts. One of the challenges that we are faced when asked the question, how many customers do we provide service to? We track cans. And the biggest challenge is, as you know, and I'm sure some of you, as our customers, may not put your can out twice a week. You may only put it out once a week. So when we, when we do a can count, it's not an exact science. But based upon that and some, some reasonable determinations, when we look at our 11,287 billed customers, we, at our best approximation, serve 10,295 of those, okay? And of those 992, they may not receive garbage, but many of the multifamily complexes, we do provide trash and recycling to. So we don't fully serve them, but we do serve them. And so that works out to be approximately 8.8% of our total customer base that's not receiving full service sanitation, but they may receive portions. So that's just a, and I know that was the topic of conversation, is that, hey, I pay, I get charged a fee, but where I rent is using the dumpster service. And we do have that case in many multifamilies out there. do have that case in many multifamilies out there. So that, that's just good information, and, and I think that y'all have came up with a, a pretty simple solution to that problem, that there is an exemption provided for in the ordinance, and we've just cleaned up all the, of the matrices that it is, it is based upon cans, and that if you're a commercial customer or if you're residential, it is a per-can charge, and I think that really works out from an administrative standpoint, a billing standpoint. So I'd be glad to answer any more questions about that, so.
Yeah. For the, is there any, are there any commercial customers that are, that are, they're paying customers, but they're getting no services?
As I understand it, that if you establish a utility billing account and you're inside the corporate limits, you're automatically assigned a garbage fee, okay? So for example, let's pick an easy one, Walmart. Walmart is a utility customer of the city. They get $20 right now added to their, their utility bill for garbage or sanitation services. But we provide no service to Walmart. They have compactors, they have large roll-offs, they have large dumpsters, and they have a contract services that, that takes care of all of that for them, recycles their cardboard, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, there are, there are customers out there that are being charged now that do not receive service. So in the case of passing this ordinance, if Walmart doesn't have a cart, I'm interpreting, well, y'all need to tell me-
That's what we need to hear.
Yeah, we're trying to ask.
Last meeting, I was a little surprised to see an ordinance drafted by today. Not saying I don't like it being done expeditiously, but it was pretty quick. We, we need to know, we need to know what we're discussing, and it's a first read, but I think we're asking you for those details, too.
Well, it, no, let me go to the correct one, okay? So, the, it says, "We'll hereby fix the following garbage service fees for every occupant within the city." So in that case, it will be, and it, but it, it's a flat matrix, is that it's, it's, when I, when I read the word "each," that means if you're a residential customer and you choose to have two cans, that you're gonna be billed $20 per month per each can. And then that, if that is not y'all's intent, we need to make sure we clear that up, because it probably should say "each receptacle" instead of just "each," but if that's, if you're intent.
But that was our intent.
And then the, the non-residential is a rate of $25 each. And, and I was thinking about probably one of the most challenging ones. We have some downtown restaurants that do a great business, and they don't have a lot of real estate, so they may have 10 cans that we, we service, but I'll guarantee you, 250 is still significantly less than what a dumpster would cost them, so it's still a good value to them. So I, I don't, I don't foresee anybody, when comparing to what it would go to have a dumpster service versus what we provide, as being, we're still probably a good value to them.
And what are they getting charged right now?
They, they get charged a base rate plus an additional $5 per can, okay? And that's probably the, that's a loss leader, that's a great value that we've been offering.
And how often is the commercial picked up?
Again, everybody is guaranteed twice a week, but because of certain customers downtown in a health and, and health and welfare aspect, there are some restaurants that have limited area for receptacles that will service up to six times a week.
And how many cans?
Sometimes it may be as few as four, just because of the area they-
They're paying one time $25 per month?
$25 a can, but right now, in my district, it's gonna be $25 a can per month.
But they're still giving two and a half times the service to some of our residents, three times the service to some residents.
Yeah, well, we compare that to dumpster rentals.
It's still, it's still a good value.
I guess I'm trying to defend us on that.
It's a bargain.
It may sound tough, but it still sounds fair.
A bargain for the customer, because they're-
Exactly. So you don't think, I'm just being devil's advocate, if I may, Councilor Chair.
No, no, please go.
You don't think that we should have a service charge if we have to return on those situations, or is that a deficit, you know, labor cost is real? I mean, do you, you think that that should be something we should consider?
And I, and I'm, I'm always about simplicity, and if you, the, the ability to get too deep in the weeds to customize, every customer gets a little problematic. Here's the thing, with our central business district, and that's the area we're talking about, that's the proper downtown, that is mostly alley, backdoor service, where there's just no room for dumpsters, so the dumpster's not even an option for them, so we, we, they're committed to us and we're committed to them. We're already working that territory with a truck six days a week anyway, so it is just a matter of that if there's, if there's material, we pick it up, and that includes recycles and everything else. It's just the nature of the beach, and our downtown is so vibrant that that wasn't the case 10 years ago, but the number of stores that have a high volume of deliveries, and thus the waste associated with those deliveries, has changed in the last 10 years, and, and we've changed with them, and, and it is, it is a white glove of service that we try to provide, and whereas the professional office space downtown, we may only service them, there may only be a can out once a week, but the restaurant right next door is gonna fill every can they have almost every day.
Yeah, so you're already running that route?
Yes, sir.
That's why I asked, so it's not like, so it's a redundant thing?
Yeah, the opportunity cost has already been consumed, meaning that truck is gonna run the downtown route six days a week, because we, we don't want the accumulation in our alleyways and, and which are also public spaces in many, any, in many cases.
But if you got 10 cans, you're looking at $250 a month. Right now, if you have 10 cans, you'd be looking at-
What, $95 a month?
$95.
$95 a month. It's a big jump up, I mean, I'm not saying we don't need to charge that, basically, just look at the fuel costs and, and everything else y'all are-
Well, there's no doubt.
Labor and fuel alone.
And they did six pickups, I mean, I mean, you know.
I'm just, but that's just, that is a big jump to go from $95 to $250.
How many customers do we believe have 10 cans?
Very few. I mean, and you probably can think of, the downtown restaurants are the, are the ones that are in compact locations and have very little storage area, and, and those are, those are the high-volume customers, but, you know, most of the other downtown businesses are probably twice a week is all we pick up, because that's all they produce.
I, I do want to mention that the number of customers that we're talking about waiving the garbage before is a little over 8%, maybe close to 10, like 8.8%, 9%. So that revenue needs to be recaptured somewhere.
9% of our total-
Customers.
Customers, we're talking about waving?
That they do not receive garbage services from the City of Fairhope.
Do they recycle?
That I don't know.
Do they put appliances out?
Yes, they do. Some of them do, yes. And we, we did say that that was something when we had, we had a inner, you know, an internal meeting, and we did talk about, we have to recapture that revenue from somewhere. And the other thing is, some of the services that they're, they're getting, like when you have these apartment complexes that we're not charging, and they put out couches and appliances and those kind of things, we've always been gracious enough just to pick them up. Well, that's also going to change. There will be a charge for that, like there should be. There is already a fee established for that. So while you're talking about debating the number of cans and how much we're going up, we also have to recapture some revenue.
Yeah, we're not, we, yeah, I, so the question is, when, how do we, historically, was, was there a reason, maybe, Richard, you would know, and I think Jack asked the question once, historically, how we got in a situation where we were adding that cost to that 9% of people? Was there a-
It, it, when, when, whenever, this was the original, and you can go back and see the history of it, whenever it was formalized, it just said, "Every occupant of the city."
So if you live, let me just try to get the nature of it, the spirit of it. If you live in Fairhope, it was written, you, you're gonna pay for-
You would assess the sanitation fee.
Sanitation fee, okay.
And-
Whether you get a can or not.
That is correct, and, you know, and the, I think part of that you look at is understand is that we provide sanitation for all the public spaces in the city.
Right.
If accumulation of, of trash or junk accumulates that's been put out on the street in front of a, of a, we're gonna collect it and take care of it. So it is kind of that health, safety, and welfare that everybody has a responsibility.
Responsibility, and I think that, that, what if-
And they've got access to the-
Well, what if it's not $20? What if it's $5? You know, because that's where I'm getting at here, and I think the spirit was, look, the guys that are, they're saying, well, we might not be picking up a can, but we're picking up something, and so everybody should have a responsibility in the community to do something. Is that kind of what I'm, I'm trying to figure out how, i- i- if that's the spirit, if you think that's the spirit of how that got there?
Yeah, and, and I think, and it may be, and, and Marcus and the mayor, and y'all can kind of comment, this is the nice thing, this is, it's just the introduction tonight, but I do think we need, we need to, because right now, if I read this, it, it basically still applies to everybody, but then there's a waiver included, that if you are not receiving service and are on fixed income, there's a process which you can get a complete waiver to it. But that is, you know, but if you live in a multifamily complex and it's an expensive place and you, you're not on a fixed income, you can apply for that waiver, even though you may not be receiving full service. So I really need some guidance on how you would like to see that structured.
So we're not, we're not waiving 10% if we're doing-
We're not waiving 10%.
Okay.
But, but there are 10% of the people who are getting, or 8.8% of the people who are on our garbage service, they may or may not be on fixed income, but if they ask for a waiver and they were on fixed income, that's the, that's the revenue we would have to recapture.
But, but there's 8.8% that are in the city limits that are not receiving service.
Correct.
But there's a small fraction of that that are on fixed income, social security only.
We know we probably have, I mean, there, there, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a number where we're gonna need to recapture some revenue.
That's, but that's what I'm saying, though, Councilor Chair.
I don't mind.
It doesn't really matter if they're on fixed income or not, the way we're writing it right now. If they're not getting service, we're saying they qualify for exemption, is that right?
They have to be on fixed income.
They have, so what about the-
And live in subsidized housing.
Basically, yes.
That's, well, that's what the ordinance says.
And we have one, two, three, possibly four, four apartment complexes, maybe five.
Yeah, but that, that's not-
So like, right now-
9% of the population.
If Walmart is not getting a can, we would still charge Walmart?
They'd still pay it. They would, they would be charged $25 a month.
And we're gonna continue that, is what we're saying.
Yeah, line item E says that any occupant who lives in a subsidized housing unit and only receives income from social security may qualify for an exemption from garbage fees. City Fairhope has a form that can be taken to your property manager to complete, then returned for exemption consideration. So it sounds like that's a small percentage of people to me.
What, what I really wanna make sure that I'm clear on, we had a young lady from the community come in, and I've had others call me thus, that are not low-income, but do not receive a service, and saying they're getting charged for a service that they're not receiving.
I think they would still be paying.
Say, say again?
If they're, they, they have to have proof that they are on social security.
No, listen to what I'm saying now, what I'm saying is, you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, I got an example of it. I think that, so whenever you have a city and you have a community, you know, you, you do a lot of things for the good, the common good, and it, when the, when the garbage services were established, they probably needed the income from everybody to just buy garbage trucks and pay people. And the best example I can give of that now is recycling. Not everybody recycles, not all of our neighbors recycle, but that recycling truck still goes by that house, and if they were to say, "I wanna discount on my garbage collection because I'm not recycling," what, where are we, where are we gonna go with that? See what I'm saying? If you say, "I don't use that service, I don't wanna pay for that," recycling's a part of our garbage service as well. So that's where we're gonna have to have some kind of schedule for people that they may not, they may not put their garbage out on the street.
Well, but if you access-
We're disincentivizing them to-
But if they're in the city, they got access to the city dump and all that, too, so they-
And we're, and that's, and that's the reason they pay fees, right?
And if they use any public, any public spaces, then to Richard's point, they contribute to the trash.
Yeah, or, or if I just decide, "I'm only gonna put my garbage can out once a week, I wanna pay half." I mean, you know, where, where does, where does it stop? You know, I mean, having access to the service is the service in a lot of ways.
I think what y'all are proposing is maybe the correct solution, that we're, we're providing an exemption if you're in subsidized housing and only on so, and fixed income, then you have an option for an exemption.
And, and the reason that was discussed internally when we met with our committee was because that's the, I mean, logistically, if there's somebody who's not in subsidized housing and they're only on fixed income, we're go, we're going to be put in a position of verifying that, so that means bringing in copies of bank statements and those kind of things, to make sure people aren't getting income from somewhere else if they say that.
Okay.
So there is some, if, if we change it and make it for somebody who's not in subsidized housing, then, because we're gonna rely on their apartment complex that already verifies their financial information to provide us with that, because there's another mechanism for review, versus our staff having to do that. I mean, we could put that in place, but we were trying to use what was already in place, so we don't have to.
So what I, so the, the scenario that we had with the young lady and the, the people that I'm hearing in the community, if they're not getting a service, we still find them, I'm just speaking as a body, we're finding them responsible for contributions, even though they're not getting a service. Is that what I'm hearing?
And, and from, yes, but from what I understand, like the lady who came in and spoke, she is part of a subsidized housing complex.
So scenario B, if you're not a part of subsidized housing, you're not on a fixed income, but you're not getting service, but you're getting billed, should you, should you be getting billed?
You're still going to pay for it.
Yeah, because, well, let me, let me just ask this question. Yeah, this is what the- You know, and I get what you're saying, but I mean, but that goes, so the people, you know, you're, the people in your example, do they have access to garbage? I mean, could they put a can out if they chose to?
I, you know, I, I'm, the scenario, let's say they could, I'm, I'm, just go ahead, so they can, so, and, go ahead, I'm listening.
So they can, just because they don't doesn't mean they shouldn't have to pay for the service. If I, if I'm out of town and miss my garbage, you know, I'm on a, you know, I'm gone for a month and don't put my garbage out, I still have to pay for that.
Yeah, Councilman Robinson, I don't think that's the case. From what I understand, and it, it wasn't a large, it was just put out there that, that people were getting charged that do not have a can or are not getting service, but they're paying for that service. You see, you see what I mean?
I do.
So do we still charge them if they are not getting served? That's the question.
My thought, yeah, my thought would be, is if you are unable to get service, meaning if the city is unable to provide you a garbage service, then whether you're an occupant of the city or not, you shouldn't have to pay. But, but-
I mean, that's the question I'm asking.
But if you, if you can and you just elect not to for whatever reason.
That's different, that's different, that's planning system, I wanna know the, I wanna-
So, so my question then would be, what, what, what individuals in the city that we charge don't have access to the service? That would be my question. Because I, I would agree with Cory in that situation, that if, if they don't have access to our garbage service, then, you know, should we charge them the same as everybody else? I'd say no.
I would say it would be discounted.
Now, do, do, yeah, do you still charge them something because they do still participate as a member of the overall community? But I'd, I'd wanna know what scenario there is where someone doesn't have access to our garbage pickup.
Yeah, and, and I reckon that now we're, we're getting into the individual versus the commercial, okay?
Yeah, correct, I think that's where we're at.
Okay. So most of those scenarios are people that live in a apartment complex.
Correct.
But what if the apartment complex is not subsidy?
Well, let, let me give you a real-world example.
Okay, that's-
The, the development behind the Publix on Parker Road and part of the Fly Creek Planning and Development, there is 320, Eric, how many apartments are there, Fly Creek? 400?
Yeah.
All right, so every one of those have an established utility, and every apartment pays a residential rate, but they are serviced by a third-party private dumpster, because there is no way that we can reasonably accommodate them, because they're four-story buildings, and where would they keep their, their garbage carts, okay? But, but they pay, so if, if we, if we, we go down that path, you can do that math pretty quickly, that one account would be a decrease of thousands and thousands of dollars on an annual basis, okay? Then Publix right in front of them. We cannot service Publix, we're not in the commercial dumpster business and, and, and it, that, and so, you know, but Publix, it gets charged right now $20 and that's it, okay? I don't think that when they look at their utility bill, the $20 stands out of what probably their monthly utility. So we need to ask that question, where, where are we trying to go to?
Yeah.
And then that, that question becomes significantly different, I mean, because if all of a sudden your income potentially decreases by eight, nine, 10%, because these are, these are best estimates.
Yes.
That, that, we have to look at where the offset from that comes from.
But, but then again, each of these individuals in that apartment complex who are residents of the City of Fairhope have access to the city dump.
That is correct.
That's, that's the thing.
That's the thing I want to talk about.
Yeah, me too.
The problem you have is you're dealing with the come pick it up. But the deal is that the garbage service doesn't just center around the trucks themselves. It centers around all of the sanitation. And all of sanitation is that gate's open every day. And you could get, you could go so far as to say, well, I don't use the gate, I don't go take my own stuff there, except so I need to get a fee or a reduction. The point is, it is available for everybody here. It's a service that the city provides and everybody needs to chip in and have skin in the game as far as these services are here for them. Because when you get into that, how do you know that person's not taking a sofa or something to the dump? Or if that same individual hasn't taken a boatload of clearing the attic out and taken it to the dump? It still has to be provided for. And I think you're getting a little bit too far skewed of what the overall situation is, which is we provide a service that everybody needs to participate in.
Yeah, I think the way you guys have written the ordinance provides the exemption for the folks that should, should be exempted that we heard from at the last meeting. And I feel like y'all actually captured the spirit of what we were trying to get to in this. And I agree with what Kevin's saying. I mean, it's, the dump's available to everybody. They may not have curbside service, but they've got access to the dump if they use it and everybody contributes to creating trash in the community.
I took my trash there because the can was full, I needed the can, so I took it myself. Am I going to get a discount because I took it myself?
You can't use your can for leaves, Kevin.
Yeah, the question that was coming, so.
Normally we don't use it, even, I don't even eat twice a week, but this particular case scenario, but I mean, you see where I'm getting, this, this, this could roller coaster downhill forever.
You had all sorts of different.
We just need to.
The ultimate goal is to provide a service for the city of Fairhope. That's what we do.
Okay, but we need to, to be particular, as my granddaddy would say, when we are writing this thing, because what you have is you have a community, if I'm, if I'm not getting something and you're charging me, I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's, that doesn't fly in the, in the streets, you know? You're going to have to explain to me.
They'll get it to the dump themselves.
Right, you got to explain to me why I'm paying this dollar when I don't see anything happening for that dollar. And I think that's where the confusion is getting with our community, especially in that scenario.
Yeah, and I think, and I hope Mr. Burrell forgive me for selling it a little bit, but you also got to remember that, that in the way we look at and approach our community, every day you have two litter patrol people out every day picking up litter from the side of the street. That's all goes into the solid waste stream and that's part of our community aesthetic, community good. Every day, two street sweepers are doing nothing but picking up street litter and debris from our streets to keep them not only out of the waterways and everything else. That's part of our overall sanitation of our city. And every day, every public space gets litter serviced, the white boxes along the downtown streets, all of the receptacles in the parks, that's all part of the public sanitation. So I don't, I take offense that if I live in an apartment, I'm getting nothing for my contribution. No, you get to live in a very clean, beautiful city and part of that dollar helps make sure we keep it clean and beautiful.
Well, it's kind of like a private school. I mean, you can send your kids to private school, but you're still paying a portion of your property taxes going to fund the public school system. You may not have kids yet or at all, and you're still paying property taxes for the school system because it's, it's part of the services offered to the community. So that, to me, is kind of in that realm.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. And this is why, when I saw this on the agenda, I was a little bit concerned as to whether or not we would be ready to introduce it because it's complicated.
Yeah.
But could we continue to work this? And is there a menu that we could have for charges when you do use a service, potentially for lower income housing? Because I think there's going to be time steps. You know what, they change their furniture out too and you're going to be picking up that chair and ottoman out there on the curb occasionally. I don't really know what, you know, what you're supposed to charge for that. But, and, and you take into all that other considerations that you just named, that they're also paying as part of this community to keep the city beautiful. And as Kevin said, you know, they may take their car battery to the city dump and, you know.
At some point though, an à la carte type menu is just too much to keep up with.
Well, I know, it may be.
And simple, less is more, I think, in a simple.
And I've heard that a lot here, but sometime today.
And I will tell you, the challenge, and I'm not, I'm not prepared, and it'd probably be best to get our folks that handle the billing into things. You know, they have the hard part, they're the ones that have got to set all this up and maintain it. So when you start getting into any consideration of à la carte, that gets real challenging from a billing and, because we're the operation folks, you know? We go out and just, and we clean it up. And right now, the good news is when it's X, Y, Z apartment that says, hey, somebody, we, somebody's moved out of an apartment and there's two old, a mattress, a box springs and a sofa, we just go hauling. Because we know they have contributed to ensure that we can do that.
There's one last consideration as well, and I want to ask the city attorney, if you're providing a service that somebody is not paying for it, we got people in this audience who are being told you can't use the facility unless you pay for it. And so can you give somebody a service? Let's just say it's a one time, you know, you got people in these subsidized housing, so they say they're not using the service, but they really are. Like you said, they're using the garbage pickup, the street sweepers, garbage cans downtown. They may not be using it, but everybody has to pitch in for that. So is there a legal side to this as well?
Potential, I mean, I think there's the whole safety and welfare issue that you can overcome something like that with low income individuals that may be using some services. But as far as just giving them free services, I don't think you can do that. There has to be some, some type of payment. I would have to look at that, Councilman, to make sure that I'm on the right page and able to do that before giving you the evidence.
It's a pretty, maybe you may make some assumptions and come up with a calculation of how much of a person's garbage bill goes to pay for these certain services. I know I'm complicating it, but there is a legal concern, I think.
I think, Richard, I thought you did a great job of explaining it. I thought your examples were right on. And this just seems to me like one of those things where everybody gets charged a price because you have access to the service. What, how much you take advantage of that service might differ from person to person. And trying to calculate everybody's use of that service and come up with a fee that represents each individual person's exact usage of that is just too much.
Yeah.
And so to me, the system we've got in place seems to be working just fine.
The other problem with à la carte is it never, it never ends. It never ends. It'll continue from now to doomsday because everybody will have some extenuating circumstance that they feel they're being unjustly done, when in reality, they live in this city and this city has a price in order to keep the cost of living here.
Yep.
Just like Richard said, we got people doing all kinds of stuff that benefit. Then we have trash cans for the public to use anytime they want to use it. And it's just going to get, I think, just way out of control.
Would y'all, I'm sorry.
Counsel, what, when people call in and they ask, okay, I have this charge on my bill, I think that's what I mean by be particular, I'm just being devil's advocate right now. They really don't want to hear, well, it's just been that way, you know? I think we need to be more particular and more detailed of how we explain that itemized bill to the people in the community, so it's not as if we're robbing them.
You need to open it every day.
Right, 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 so, and I think education is the key in every situation, you know? But that's just, that's what I mean by that. I think everybody should play a part, but they should also understand what part they're playing.
I think.
Would y'all want us to look at a lesser, instead of waiving the fee completely, would you want us to look at like a $5 charge or?
I think I like the ordinance, the way it's been put together.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Personally.
Yeah.
I mean, we just needed some time to talk through it because we had, we didn't talk about it as a follow-up in a work session. So I appreciate you spending the time, but I think you did a good job on it personally and covered that. I know you weren't expecting to probably spend.
It was a good discussion.
But we've got other items we need to cover from you too, so don't run off just yet. Number 10, I believe, and I think that one was, was a large file that a lot of people couldn't open and read on, on their laptops.
And Mayor, you prepared, I mean, I know we're just, we're just clarifying some roles and things that emergency operations.
Or maybe I'm jumping ahead on that.
You were, you were talking about the disaster.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
You're talking 21 and 22.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm talking 21 and 22.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
21 and 22.
But 11's, I did mention 11, but 21 is 22 is what I was really.
21, 22, I will tell you, they're probably the, the two most important contracts in public works that we can talk about that we hope we never, ever execute, okay? And that is our debris monitoring and our debris and disposal removal related to disasters. And as you know, unfortunately, those can only be kept in place for three years. So we have gone through that process to readvertise. And we had an evaluation team that was composed of the city treasurer, public works director, assistant public work director and the sanitation supervisor, and who are all the people who interact with those two parties in, in a time of disaster where there is debris. And we have made a recommendation of 21. This is the debris removal monitoring services, which is pretty much a requirement by FEMA now that you have that service to True North Emergency Management. And I will say they are the ones that handled it during Sally, as well as handled PA related to COVID and Sally outside of disaster debris. And to Crowder Gulf is number 22. I will tell you that the disposal contractors, the, we took, and I hope it's in your packet, we took the Sally numbers and put the new numbers in there. And I will tell you that the spread was about 300,000 to 400,000 from the lowest to the highest, which tells me that those respondents were, were, were pretty tight on their numbers. I will tell you that overall number's a little larger than it was with Sally, but when you consider fuel and things and that, and hauling debris and disposing of debris is all fuel intensive, so we did see those numbers go up. You know, the lifecycle cost of the cubic yard of material probably was about a 20% increase overall. So that is, but considering just what was fuel prices in 20, September of 2020 compared to 2022, it has changed a good bit and those are our recommendations there.
And backing up, I think you had some other stuff, so I didn't mean to jump all the way there.
On 13, I can speak to it, but I know it's near and dear to Mayor and as well as Jessica. But as you know, we have the Gomez grant and part of that is the procurement process. We did do a request for proposals and did an evaluation that I think many, a couple of you were participants in. And the recommendation is to issue the professional landscape architectural services to Thompson Engineering. They put together a pretty impressive team. All the teams that submitted were very impressive, but Thompson rated out the highest. Number 14, near and dear to my heart, this is the second time's a charge. This is the Gafer Avenue Turn Lane and Signal Upgrade, which is an MPO funded project. We had to rebid that due to some issues with our advertisement. And I will tell you that we ended up with the, with a sole bidder after having five participants in the prebid. And it is McElhaney Construction, which was the prior bidder. And we did see about a 5% increase in that cost. Aldot has supported issuing the contract if you see fit. It is within the MPO budget and within the match budget that we have on the books. And we are recommended that we move forward because our fear is that if we reject and readvertise, we may end up in the same spot at another 5% increase. And then number 15, which we've talked about a little bit, is that you've, y'all have authorized the funding agreement and we are going through the process of engaging Volker to start on the roundabout at the intersection of North Section, Triangle Drive, Veterans Drive and Scenic 98. And those not to exceed are what is in that funding agreement. We hope that engineering won't be that high, but that is the maximum set by the funding agreement for that project. And that also is MPO money that has been allocated. Number 16, very quickly, we priced this job based upon the insurance evaluation, only to find out that we really had leaks in other parts, so we'd like to reject. We're going to go out and rebid it to do all of the roof of the rec center as well as pool and fix those portions of fascia and trim that also got damaged during Hurricane Sally. I can answer any questions about the flooring at police station, but I know they're excited about that and that's a budgeted item. And then 20, and I've, I've just got involved with helping our utilities. Make this very short. The roundabout at County Road 13 and 44, Twin Beach, is a county project. And their funds do include 100% of the cost of utility relocates as well as the engineering. But the engineering has to be a line item that they submit as part of the project. So what they're asking for us to do is to execute these agreements that are all attached. We will get billed by the engineer, then we'll turn around and get 100% of our money back from the county. For some reason, the highway safety improvement and the other federal laws they're using does not allow the county to direct pay for the engineering. There has to be a pass-through third party, so that what, what we're asking for is approval for the mayor to execute that and we will get dollar for dollar back on that engineering cost. The cost of the actual relocates will be included in the contract that the county puts out to the general contractor to do those utility relocates. But we've got to pay the engineer and then submit reimbursement. So it's one of those things that we need an allocation, but we'll get 100% of it back. Any questions? And I apologize for having so many items on the.
I'm sorry for you guys, I mean, yes, sir.
I have a question about the item 22 of the disaster debris removal contract.
Yes, sir.
What is the, what is the process for that? They're going to pick up the debris and then they haul it to a site? And then it's, it's turned in and mulched there and then it's taken to another site?
That is correct. They are, they are required to collect and then there is a certain amount of processing, meaning that if they get any mixed materials, i.e. that there's, there's C and D or something in, in the pile that comes in, they've got to sort. The expectation is that all of the vegetative is reduced. And as you'll notice in there, there are several line items. They can, they can burn, they can grind, but, but there, it has to be reduced. And I will tell you, the chances of getting a burn permit in Baldwin County these days is about slim to none, but that, that line item is in there. But I don't, I think the last time that any successful burning occurred was at Baldwin County for Ivan in 2004 and that got shut down, so. But most of the reduction now is done by grinding. And then that vegetative debris has to have a final disposal. And for, for whatever reason, when we had Sally, there was apparently absolutely no opportunity or market for that wood chip to go anywhere but into a permitted landfill, so it was landfill. If the market changes or the industry changes at the next future storm, that may be a different option. But yes, they have to collect, sort, reduce and dispose.
So let me ask why, let me tell you why I asked that question. So I had somebody ask me this question after Sally, after why we're moving it twice because it costs a lot of money. Now, granted, the people that bid on it, maybe that's just the only way they have it set up. But you're talking about how much it costs in fuel and we're moving a pile somewhere and then we're taking that pile and then we're moving that pile somewhere. We can't find somebody that can take the place to one final spot and grind it up and dispose of it there? Because, I'm having people shake their hands, who's this?
Yeah.
FEMA's rule? We can't, you can't do it at the same place.
They want to reduce, maybe just to someone's destination of the landfill because of how much it costs to have a landfill.
That's not where it's. Looking to that. How does FEMA know what the landfill cost is going to be? They don't know what everybody's paying for using landfill?
And, and you know, the, the good thing about the separating the vegetative does not have to go to a line or C and D permitted landfill. It just has to be a permitted for inert vegetation. So that's relatively a good cost. And, but the reason they want it reduced is that, I'll give you an example. For Hurricane Sally, we had nearly 600,000 cubic yards of vegetative debris come into the temporary debris management site. But once it was reduced, that went down to about 150 cubic yards that had to be disposed of, okay? So the reduction took the volume down by one-fourth or better, okay? And thus, the, you pay to landfill it by the cubic yard and thus your price went down considerably than if you were to just have tried to dispose of that unreduced. And that is, that is a FEMA requirement.
We can't put pressure on the county commissioners to allow, if it's not too dry, the burning of that debris, saying it's going to be. of that debris, saying it's going to be next to impossible. But if every city in the county was to put pressure on the county commissioners, say, you're killing us here. You're killing us with this call.
Well, and I will tell you, the challenge with burning is, as I understand it, is that generally, your hurricanes tend to occur in that August, September, maybe early October. Usually, there is a statewide no burn permit, no burn requirement after October 1.
I qualified my statement as assuming there was no drought.
Okay. And the other thing is, is that I think, maybe Kim can remind me of this, that it was residents that got very, came unglued with the burning that the county was doing, and that's pretty much what shut it down. So there's a lot of ifs there, councilman, but burning has just not been, you know, successful. And, and if you had the perfect scenario, and I do know that Daphne had this opportunity, they, they have a inert, an old dirt pit that they, they had, that they were able to turn into their debris management site. So they, they didn't have to move it twice. Meaning, it was brought in, reduced, and shoved over into the hole. We don't have that, that available to us right now. If we had that, absolutely, we could cut out that, that haul cost of moving it the second time. But it has to, it does have to go rest somewhere that is, that is permitted for inert vegetation. So, and we got lucky that where it went was a reasonable price compared to what if we had to take it to McBride or something like that. So.
Last question. So they blame all this on fuel. Is there anything in the contract that says if the price of a barrel of oil goes down by 40%, we're going to, it's going to, we can readjust the price of the contract?
There is no index in that contract.
I think we need to really start looking at that going forward. I think it's going to be volatile for a while. And, you know, I've been working on the bridge project, price of steel and concrete through the roof, but it may not always be. We go into a recession, things might actually go down. And we're getting, we're getting hit with these really high numbers, which may very well be true, but they may not be true.
Well, I, I think the commitment that Kim and I can make to you, the good news is, is that we can renew this contract up to three years. But it's, it's, it's each year annually that we have to mutually agree to it. If we find ourselves at next spring and fuel prices are back to half of what they are, I think it would be advantageous for us to make the determination that we're not going to renew for the second year and rebid.
So you're basically just on the hook for this hurricane season.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so.
You going to change much by me?
What was the cost? What did we bid here? I, I never got that number. What were the numbers on?
I didn't think natural gas was going up 200% this year either.
There's a lot of numbers, councilman.
Sorry, Richard. Is it, okay. There was not, y'all don't know how the number in your head. It's okay. I'll find it. I just wanted, I know he talked about the numbers, but he never.
That's good. That's satisfactory.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, it's a lot right now. Not, you know, I'm not going through this right. It's hard. Yeah, it's just hard for me. Yeah, yeah. It's all good. So, yeah.
There's a spreadsheet that, that is in there that shows you the Sally numbers were plugged in.
Yeah, I was trying to find it.
So you could at least have an apples to apples comparison. So, but it is, just saying, the bid is a unit basis for every activity related with debris removal. So, you know, there's a unit price, but then you've got to remember, that's going to be multiplied by what it is. And, and I hate to be pessimistic, but every storm is different. And for example, Sally did not produce a lot of C and D, did not produce a lot of white goods. But, you know, if you, if you end up in a storm that you have a lot of that, those numbers could reflect differently based upon the activities that have to be done. A lot to cover. Any other questions? Well, my goal is not to use any of these contracts, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't intend on you being up here this long, so we're going to have to kind of fly through the agenda meeting here real quick. So items five, six, and seven, Hunter, those look like they're all yours. That'd be the two public hearings plus the right of way. Oh, Eric. Okay, I'm sorry. Apologize, Eric. Not trying to steal your thunder there.
Sure. Came back from a meeting, and there was some news companies or news agencies wanting an interview and asking questions about our moratorium. So I just want to give you all a heads up. There was, there's no changes to our moratorium. I know we've talked about it. But those were generated from a project approved on Ingleside by the planning commission. The news article misquotes, it's being approved by the city council. So that was, it will be coming. A site plan will be coming to you. But I think it was 14 units. There were seven townhomes within that project. And the questions were about why I thought we were under a moratorium. I know we've said it 1,000 times, but it's hard to get the message out sometimes. Our moratorium is only outside the city limits, major subdivisions and MOPs. At this time, not within the city limit. So just hope to clarify some of those. You were quoted as well. So you and I are quoted in there?
I wasn't even there.
I know. They quoted, I think, the, when we adopted the moratorium.
Oh, okay.
I think they reached back and quoted from that there. So just wanted to give you a heads up there.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Number 10, I guess Mayor's at you about the hurricane. Number 11, Arts and Crafts Festival Foundation. I know we had some folks from Arts and Crafts coming. Is anyone from the city need to speak to that? Using the welcome center? All right. Paige, would you know much about that? Or I just asked?
They're asking for the same thing they can ask for. I think since we own pot property, so that portion of pot property can run along.
Yeah, I knew they were coming. Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. I knew they wanted to come at the beginning of the meeting for that.
We have, we budgeted to renovate that. I think that's correct. We're going to put that in the budget.
The pot property?
Yep. Okay, it'll be finished then by then.
So that is all subject to change then, depending on?
My, the Slade, the Durassy area or other.
Let's see. Number 12 is the proposed hand, safety handbook. Would that be, who'd be handling that? Yeah, Corey can handle that. All right. Do you want to cover anything of that right now? Or is it just what y'all been working on? Okay. Sounds good. Let's see. I've got Richard on a bunch. Number 17, we have Jeremy? There you are. Jeremy. And Jeremy, was this, is this for any services? Or is this particularly for the cast iron replacement? Or for the, or for the monitoring of?
This is strictly for time-sensitive and safety-sensitive projects in the future.
Okay.
Stuff that happens throughout the year. Everything is scheduled to, of course, bring to y'all. But this is for the time-sensitive and safety-sensitive projects that we occur throughout the year.
Gotcha. All right. And is that something, we put that full amount in the budget and wants approved?
Whether we need all of it or not.
Got it. Perfect. And you good, by the way, on your, your place?
Yeah, everything's going, yeah.
All right.
House is still standing.
Good. We had a little three-man meeting at the hardware store. We were all having issues. So, good. Glad y'all are all well.
Thank you, sir.
Um, let's see. Item number 18 is, can be Tom, I guess, procurement of a three-year Toro renewal plan and Link's apps, activation for irrigation system at Quail Creek. That's pretty self-explanatory, I guess.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Well, you're doing a pretty good job. I guess we'll take your word for it. Then we got Richard, a bunch again. Kim, would this be you amending the budget for official year '21, '22? Recommended, presented, anything you'd like to go ahead and tell us about that? There's several different items, right?
Some of it, some of it's small. Like the first one, that's the $2,000 that we're moving from small equipment to general supplies. That's the HR department. It was, we set up that as a new department, and the previous HR manager didn't put any, didn't budget anything in supplies. So that's just a small amount. The next one is 1340. That's at the Marina. We've done some small little peer work. But altogether, that's, that actually is the capital improvements that we have to book as assets. So we're moving some money to cover those additional, their additional peers. We set some pylons. The next one is in small equipment. We budgeted a trailer, and it, and the description said trailer and it said equipment. We took it upon small equipment is something that's over, under $5,000. Capital equipment is over $5,000. And so it was actually budgeted and just in the wrong place for, to buy this trailer. So that's what that's moving. It was $9,800 so we could be able to purchase that trailer, which is put in the wrong budget line item. At the golf department, they've done, which y'all have heard up here, they've done several, having to do some additional maintenance on the ground. So this is just moving some money from supplies to general maintenance. And then the next one for $20,000, that is moving from the clubhouse, $20,000 from clubhouse capital improvements over to grounds equipments to be able to purchase the bat wing mower that's supposed to come up for the next meeting. And then in gas department, they've gone over on budget to enforce some, or purchasing small equipment, anything under $5,000. So that was just to move some money from general supplies to the small equipment.
Okay.
That's kind of a real quick rundown for each line item.
All right. Counsel, any quick questions for Kim while she's up here on that?
No. And I do want to let you know, just as a counsel, today I did put out an RFP for our reserve deposits. That interest rate, we've had this wonderful floor amount for three years. It ends at the end of this month, which the floor was 2.10%. So hopefully we'll get some good rates. That rates are going up. But, you know, I hope to get that in time that we can award that at the next meeting so we don't lose interest on those reserves.
All right. Thank you. Next item up is the city rec league soccer. Mayor, you want to do that? Or Pat, who would, or? All right. That's fine by me. Would either one of you gentlemen like to take the lead when we get to that? Okay.
Yeah, not a problem.
All right. All right. Next item up is the off-premise license for Publix. That is battles, that's the Battle Wolf's War for Publix. All right. All right. And then that's pretty much it. Let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back and get.